Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, March 8th, 2010. It's on or about 7:00 PM this evening. City Council is going to be meeting in a series of committee meetings, starting with the Planning and Development Committee. Committee Chair Chris Paul.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to revisit the contractor registration. Last committee meeting, we had a discussion about the registration and there was some concern about the costs of the registration and the levels of people who would have to register, whether part-time contractors versus full-time contractors would have to register. And John Paskey is here to answer questions, so come on up, John. First of all, how, I think one of the questions was, how did you come to the $100 fee?
The $100 fee I got from what the contractor registration already is for plumbers and electricians that we already have established in our city code. So I just kept the same number across the board for all the trades.
Right. And what do you do, is there any difference between what you would do as oversight between the different levels, you know, between the plumbers and electricians and this new contractor?
I don't know what you mean, Chris.
Are there different levels of looking at paperwork or licensing? I mean, is it going to be really that different for you as a department for work?
No. No. It should be actually quite the same with what we're doing now. People would just be required to turn in what the application is and we deal from there. Actually, we made it simpler because the old process required journeyman and apprentice and so on and so forth to also pay $50 or $25 depending on their level of qualification. And we've taken that out. Those parties will no longer be responsible for paying, just the principal of the company, representing his company, and that fee then would cover all his employees as well for every trade that we have listed.
Okay. The other question I had, which maybe Kathy Heck can describe, is what's the difference between like a part-time contractor, full-time? How does that work and how does it mesh with the tax collections?
We don't, excuse me, really distinguish between part-time and full-time. That's something you could, you know, work with for this ordinance, but anybody in the city, when my daughter was in high school and worked at Burger King, she paid city income tax and she worked part-time. So if you work or live in the city, you pay city income tax unless you work 12 or fewer days.
Isn't there a date, isn't there an age cutoff?
18.
Okay.
Yes.
So people, so the idea that somebody who's going around shoveling snow, who's a high schooler or something, would not be captured in this permitting process?
Right, right.
Okay.
Because even if they did work somewhere and taxes withheld, they can get a refund through our office. So places like restaurants automatically withhold and they can file for refunds. So if they are under 18 and they don't file, they're not required to file, they wouldn't have to pay either. They wouldn't need a refund, they wouldn't be paying us.
Okay. And the other cutoff is 12 full days of work.
Right, right.
How do you deal with things like somebody who comes in and contracts at OU and they finish their job in 11 days and?
Well, like a subcontractor, even a contractor, most contractors that we deal with and the university deals with do file. This is to know that they're supposed to find out what the rules are where they're working and they file and then it's up to them to notify their subcontractors. I think there probably are some people that slip through the cracks, but not very many. And so we, whenever we find out, it's sort of like other code issues. It's complaint-based. Often, somebody sees someone working and they notify us, then we look into it.
Okay. I'd like to open up for council questions to John and Kathy. Nancy?
I'd like to argue for lower fees for, to encourage cooperation. I think we're talking about people making between $15 and $20 an hour, or charge that. And we're not talking about people who have any kind of shingle that they can use. And I would like to err on the side of, since we're not doing anything for them, we're not warranting their work, all we're doing is making a list and they can check it. I was thinking $25 for a simple, one itinerant person would be a good amount, probably about twice what they're making any given time, and then maybe 50, 100 for the ones that have more than one employee. And no, that's just, and I, we have the study and it just was driven home to me because I had my code visit, which cost me $90 for each unit, $180. And I was trying to figure out what was the proportionality there and I can't see it. So, you know, I would like, I told you that already, Chris, I didn't bring it up before because I didn't know for sure how this was going to sort out. But I mean, I would think we'd get more if we asked, if we reduced the price a bit and made it more reasonable according to what these people are making.
I don't disagree with that. And Member Fall emailed me about that concern and so I called John and he's already explained, I guess, where he got the $100 fee from, but-
And I don't know if it's in the MAXIMUS study or if it was done afterwards, $100 out of the air, or was it something that was based upon that study that we have done? So maybe we need to check that.
We could check that, but we're certainly willing to work with that and the fact that different, if you look at the packet, we have two ordinances and then we have the registration packet that we gave everyone also. It lists the businesses, professions, occupations. And you could also look at the list of occupations and adjust the fees depending on, you know, what it is. Lawn care versus, you know, heating and cooling, you know, that's, we're certainly open to that.
I'd certainly hate to have-
Whatever you think is reasonable.
I'd hate to have somebody have to pay the equivalent, well, after they pay taxes on a day's work for this list, which gives them not very much. And, you know, and all we're saying is this is a person who is honest and upright and is paying taxes to the city of Athens. That's all we're saying. We're not saying they're good, we're not saying they're not good, we're just saying that's all they do.
And basically, all we are doing is accepting a form that they fill out.
Right. We're not checking it and there's no guarantee.
Is that correct?
Absolutely. We're registering.
Yeah, we're just registering. Obviously, though, the plumbers, electricians, HPA C, fire suppression would have to show us proof of their state license, but again, that doesn't guarantee their workmanship.
And the plumbers will charge appreciably more than the itinerant guys. All right. I've had my piece. Do what you want. See where we're at.
Member Gossing?
So, if this isn't to check the quality or ensure that a contractor is respectable or reputable, what if there's a contractor registered with the city that has complaints or is not performing their job to?
Well, that's one of the main reasons to have this is because then we have a tracking mechanism. If someone calls the city and complains they don't know how to get ahold of this person that did work and it's falling apart after a week, then hopefully we have a record of them so they can follow up with them. That's probably the main reason that this started, the discussion started with council, was for the community so that the city could be responsive to people who come in and knock on doors and want to do work and the occupants don't know anything about them. And as I said, we have no way of knowing what kind of work they do, but at least we would have, you know, their name, address, you know, contact information, things like that.
And would there be a mechanism, maybe, John, this is more for you, would there be a mechanism to revoke their permit from the city?
Yes, we have it in there that if we get a number of complaints against them and their quality of workmanship and their not showing up the second year around, or third year, whatever year it may be, the following year, we might look a little bit more into them and see whether we would renew their license. Obviously, you could have a complaint from somebody that's just not happy with their work and that actually it was okay. So it'd have to be, you know, a good compounded argument for them, but if they took money upfront, left, didn't come back, obviously, we're going to look real serious about them not coming back the following year.
And who would make that decision?
Well, that's, I think, pretty easy on the, if they didn't come back. It'd have to be in our office, I would think. I want to try to keep it a little transparent as far as tax balance is concerned.
That's my concern, that if a single person has given authority to strike contractors from being able to work in the city, that that would not be open enough of a process.
I think that's a good point. We might have to look and maybe write in some policy in as to what that measurement is and then we can kind of, if it does happen, obviously, making payment or getting, taking the down payment and not showing up, I think we all would agree that's grounds for not renewing their license the following year. But if it's just an argument of quality of workmanship between a homeowner and contractor, which is sufficient, that is, it's a judgment call. So at that point, I think all we can say is if the contractor completed the project and he stayed licensed and he's paid his taxes, if the homeowner isn't happy with it, I don't see where that's a reason enough to take away their license. And I'm sure we're always going to have issues like that.
And, thank you. The seventh point-
Could we clarify, there's no license involved in this? This is a registration, right?
Right.
We've got to stop using that word license.
That word license, right.
Because we're not able to revoke something that we're not giving.
Right.
Thank you.
Not a license, but?
Registration.
Registration.
And they want to pay their taxes, right?
Right, exactly.
Jeez, what a deal.
Yeah, we have talked about, and we had designed a certificate for them to carry around, but we've also talked about making it smaller, some kind of card, more sturdy. They will have something like that to carry with them so that people can just ask them. They don't have to worry about calling the city and they'll know. And if they don't have an updated one to show, then people know, maybe to keep asking or go to someone else, whatever.
Could we just make a list and put it online and then put a computer down? I mean, I can see a lot of time taken up by this, it's not necessarily beneficial. As long as we have their name and social security number, you can collect taxes and, I mean, what would be the point of having additional interaction over this? I mean, the city isn't warranting anything. If we're taking complaints, I don't really think we have the capacity to do that at this point. I guess I'd like to see a simpler system then maybe, I don't know. But I may be alone.
I think, though, that the benefit of having a card and somebody, and I especially think of seniors, because I know many, many people like on the, that I talked to when I was walking around, that, you know, somebody came by and they said that they wanted to do this, this, and this. And if you say, oh, that's great, and can I see your registration?
That's good.
That would just kind of weed up people, say, oh, I'm not registered, and then you can say, well, and that's a reason for some people to say, I'm not interested, or let me check your registration, I want to make sure that you're registered with the city.
So we're talking about fraudulent behavior, weeding that out with a card, if the person is present, has the presence of mind to do it.
Right.
And I think that's not a bad idea, saying that. I would say online would be as good for many people.
But many, especially seniors do not, are not online.
Well, I'm a senior and I'm online and a lot of seniors are online.
But you're, you know, you're-
I have nothing. I just want to, I just want to make sure that we don't give people a lot of false hope about what's going on here, because I don't think there's very much going on here.
But I think that having that one step that you have to go through would help weed out the people who just come and decide to go all the big stuff.
It's just a piece of paper or card that we'll hand them on the spot. That's not a come back while we get this printed at the printer or anything like that. It would be pretty simple. I think too, if someone knocked on my door, and this happens, I mean, this is part of what started this and Paula can attest to this also, is on the east side and maybe other nicer neighborhoods, there are a lot of people that just go along and knock on doors and ask if they can do work and to say, can you wait a few minutes while I go bring up my computer and see if you're on the city's, you know, if you just ask for the card, neither they have or they don't. I think that makes it easier for the people.
So we're going to get a card now?
I think so. A piece of paper, something.
Well, I think the card is important too, if there's that kind of concern.
Mike?
One of the things that the companies I've worked for in the past have always required, if we were ever hiring somebody to wash windows, clean out gutters, all those kinds of things that we're talking about, was a worker's comp certificate and a certificate of insurance. Now, I don't know if we would want to go over that hurdle, but that is a big protector for somebody that is hiring somebody that's going door-to-door knocking on the doors because if they slip on that ladder and, oh, I hurt my back, you know, now that homeowner has a certain level of liability where if they have seen a worker's compensation certificate, it does protect the homeowner. Now, that would limit more people, but maybe that's a level that you might want to consider.
Those are required for the registration.
Very good.
Okay. Mr. Sam?
I just wanted to say that I support Member Bean's concern about the cost, and I think I expressed that early in this discussion, that I like, I like her idea of being more friendly and getting more people to come and not see it as an onerous amount that, when you're, I mean, I've mowed a lot of lawns and I know, you know, that's a chunk of money, even in this, even in this time. And another thing is, I'm, I was concerned, I'm a little bit mollified now, but I'm concerned about talking about any kind of rating. I don't think that we're getting into that. Maybe it's something we want to be concerned with later on. Maybe we'll see that this grows into something, but right now, I also wanted to just make sure that it's just a registration that, yeah, we know that this person is doing this kind of work and that's about it. We'll give you a phone number if you need to get hold of him.
Chris, I hate to weigh in too deeply on this, but just to say that on the issue of the fee specifically, I would just encourage council to have some basis for setting that fee as opposed to just, well, you know, 100 or 50 or whatever. I mean, what are the actual costs that this fee is going to cover? There needs to be a reasonable relationship between whatever the fee you choose is and the actual cost per burden of the city would be the only.
And so I, I'm not thinking about the income tax issue, I'm thinking about the requirement to be registered in order to do any amount of work in the city.
But isn't it also a justice issue of those people who are working over 12 days who do pay their income tax? I mean, it doesn't seem like, because they're small, that if they just do it, odd job, but they do it over the cutoff for our income tax, that, and then there are other people who do, you know, who are in similar circumstances who do pay their income tax.
The issue of income tax and registration is, those two are distinct. Registration simply provides a name for the, for the city to go after and ask if they're paying their income tax. Registration doesn't mean they'll pay their income tax and there's not a 12-day requirement for registration. If you work in the city one day, as I understand, you would be required to be registered. Is that the proposal currently?
So it's not, the number of days worked in the city?
So if we made it equivalent to the same thing that you have to pay income tax, would that alleviate some of what your concerns are?
It would, yeah.
Okay. Member Wild?
A couple of things. I think the purpose of the registration is partially income tax, but also making sure quality of work. You start talking about let the people who just don't do it for a living, don't do it all the time, start coming in and saying, yeah, I will repair your gutter, I will fix your plumbing, I only do it part-time, I'm not an expert, I'm not a pro, or they wouldn't say that at all, but they do it and they fall through the cracks, then we still have the same quality control and problem. The way I look at it in terms of registration is that we will be able to track somebody's problem, there would be a file in there with complaints building up. Revocation, I thought that was off the table from the last conversation of this. If you're going to do revocation, I suspect you'd have to eventually put a board together to actually have a hearing in case somebody wants to appeal that. If somebody has a complaint, I would imagine we'd generate a file on that, which of course would require some paperwork and some time and some filing, and therefore, $25 I do not think is adequate. I believe right now for a vendor license, it's $50 a month? Is that how it works?
It's $1,300, depending on which one you're getting.
Oh, I'm not talking about A and B, I'm talking about this list I get, about every month, I'm signing off on two different vendors, one that parks out in front of BP, another one somewhere in Columbus Road. Isn't that $50 every 30 days?
Yep.
Okay, so I assume that predates me and has been vetted by the, what is it, the study that was done several years ago. I have to assume that. That's paperwork to track that. Now, I know that's food, therefore, there's health department in there, but the fact is that $25, if you're charging $20 an hour, $15 an hour, that's not a lot of time for it. $100 for a day's work, $100 for a year's work? I mean, $100, right, what I'm seeing here is not excessive if you're going to work 260 days a year and you're charging $20 an hour for something, I'm sure you have to pay tax. And according to this, you'll also have to have insurance and tax registration and contractors bond. And that, I think, is appropriate for this type of stuff. And the fact is, if we're going to track these people on any level of competency, we should, and that just means putting a record in, we're carrying a whole file from A to Z of people who do work in the city. It's going to take work and energy, it's going to take manpower.
But how can you assemble a file on somebody without them knowing it? Isn't that violating their due process rights?
Well, they're coming in. When you say don't know it-
No, no, I'm talking about somebody coming in and saying, put this in the file, I'm against so-and-so. I mean, are you going to let them know that you have this file and are going to show it to someone else?
I assume it's all public record because that's what, how else would I know if I've got a good, okay, what's to happen? Somebody's going to come along with this little certificate and I say, you know, here you go. You know, if you do work in the city, if somebody comes up to me and says, I'm going to do a house repair, I ask for references. That's the very minimum I do. I say, okay, whose house did you do? Can I drive by? Can I talk to them? Realizing, of course, that they're going to give me the best performance they had. They're not going to give me the people who are cruddy. You know, they're not going to say, oh, yeah, I really, I blew up the guy's house, you know, I mean, here's his reference, here's his number phone.
On the TV, the red footprints on the carpet.
Well, okay, yeah, but, so you're not going to see that. So the idea is you, you'd come, somebody, if somebody comes to you, they say, here's my reference, and you get the good reference, they say, well, maybe I should do a little bit more homework. Here's this registration here you showed me. I'll go to the code office, I'll say, can I see the file?
But I can't, I can't, you know, we don't have enough room. And is that fair? I mean, is it fair to do that? To collect letters from somebody without the person involved knowing it? We've stepped over the line, well, okay.
Wait a second. The contractor can go in and look at it too, can't they?
How does the Better Business Bureau deal with it?
We aren't the Better Business Bureau with the city of Athens.
Right.
Yeah, have you ever tried the Better Business Bureau? Have you ever tried the Better Business Bureau? Have you ever called them up? I've called them up on three occasions, they're not there. There's nobody there.
Angie's List is another one.
If I may, I feel it's similar to what we do now with the rental housing. Those are on file. We actually encourage, you know, the students who are coming in to please check with the code office, look in it for any violations and what have you. I think that this would be something they can indeed manage and be able to have that. And yes, I would think that we can inform them that it'll be on file and if we ever receive, dutifully, you would notify that contractor.
So there's, I mean, there's all kinds of steps in there that seem to be beyond what it initially was when it started. Okay.
It started as a registration for tax and for safety purposes. Which one do you want to go for? Do you want to go for the tax? You can go for the tax.
You know, I think it's bloomed, so I'm through basically, I know where I'm going. Questions, other questions from council?
I think that's one, no.
Well, I think that we can, we can go back and look at some of the language.
We could take it some more, yes, we could.
I, at this point, would invite count, I'm having a brain freeze. Audience members to come up and give their thoughts on this. Please, come on, come on up, come on up.
I'm member and board president of the Athens Building Industries Association. I guess first want to thank council for allowing us the opportunity to make a statement about Title 31 and 11 here this evening. And obviously, I've been writing some notes and maybe have some other, I guess, thoughts from our group after I make our statement. But let me, I guess, just since I'm speaking on behalf of our organization, tell you just briefly who we are. We're a group of 50-plus businesses from the building and development industry in the county. We're a young HBA in comparison to other associations in the state, but a rapidly growing one. Our group is made up of builders, trades contractors, suppliers, banks, CPAs, attorneys, insurance agencies, and other specialty companies. Our organization represents hundreds of tax-paying employees in our community. Part of our organization's mission is to promote quality companies that adhere to NEHB ethical standards. We expect that all our current and new members be in compliance with all federal, state, and local laws and regulations. Other companies not complying with these same regulations puts the industry, the consumer, and the tax coffers at risk. Sometimes promoting these quality companies is not enough, and on some rare occasions, the standard has to be raised to protect all stakeholders. Our organization would expect that all companies involved in building renovations or maintenance be subject to this registration process, no matter if it is for commercial, single-family, or multifamily properties, no matter if they have one employee or 1,000, a part-time person, or a national company. If you would just take a second to consider this from experience managing a business or owning a business or time in managerial accounting, every business has a cost of doing business. Before they start a project, the rent, taxes, insurance, administrative payroll, and other items are due. And if a company fails to abide by some of these industry regulations, they have significant reduction in overhead. This reduction allows them to undercut their legitimate competition. Some consumers are aware of these differences, but many are not. And allowing illegitimate businesses to escape the letter of the law could be reducing the city's tax revenues, neglecting honest employers, and putting the consumer to very expensive risk. I heard the conversation about the price and from my experience, it's, the registration is pretty on par with other cities in Ohio. Obviously, with the lack of contractor licensing in the state of Ohio, this is the only resort to protect consumers and protect, I think, individual cities and their governments. And I think the biggest part to consider is the surety bond and the liability insurance that contractors have to have. And you wouldn't want to go to your doctor, you know, if they didn't have malpractice insurance or they didn't have training, it'd be the same thing if someone built a deck on your house or made some major improvements, you would hate that something serious would happen. With all this said, Athens Building Industries Association supports the creation of the registration process, the adoption of this residential building code for Ohio. And we're encouraged that our local government sees our group as a resource and not an adversary in matters of this kind. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Brian, sir, I'm sorry. Just a quick question. You said you felt that the registration cost was reasonable. You're speaking about the $100 that's originally talked about?
The entire, if I could speak on some of the major aspects, the $100, the requirements such as liability insurance, workers comp, all that, it's almost on par in my, I guess, experience, comparison to Lancaster, Hickoryton, and just that limited aspect. And I think a lot in Ohio have that same sort of standard. So in comparison terms, it's pretty, very close. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian?
Anybody else? Kathy, you have a comment?
Can I go ahead and add this while he's getting up there? I have a copy of a letter that was sent to Mayor Wild last summer from Richard Cordray, Ohio Attorney General. I don't know if you've all seen this, if you would like a copy of it, I'd be happy to share this with you. But the state has a contractor registration program and he refers to the FEMA program, contractors who show up after a disaster. Anyway, to not read the whole letter, he obviously sent this out to entities asking them to get some kind of contractor registration program going and sent samples from other cities, Cardig, Sanzenya. So that's from the Ohio Attorney General. So that's from the Ohio Attorney General.
My name's Kevin Martin, and I live at 30 Fairview in Athens, Ohio. Thanks for letting me come in. I've been sick for a couple of years, so I had to take a break from my business. Most of you in this room know me. In 1984, I came to city council, went in and talked to Steve Pearson, and I said, "This town needs to legislate contractors and tradespeople." And for 26 years, I've been coming to this room and talking to people like Mary, Kathy, and Jim, and everybody in this room about legislating contractors. I started this 26 years ago for half the people this room's born. There's currently over 300 people, businesses, contractors, or whatever you call them, operating within the city limits of Athens right now. 300. And they're illegal. In the state of Ohio, if you perform a service or if you sell a good, you have to pay a tax to the government. You pay a tax to the government of Ohio, it's required for the city to follow suit and have a tax. I've been paying them taxes for 26 years. I was involved in 1986 with the Ohio Department of Agriculture about a study to see how much tax revenue the city of Athens is losing from not having control of the contractors. My best friend, Jack Stauffer, came in here. Jack's like a bulldog. He'll stay right on you until he gets what he wants. I'm the same way. And Jack got it passed in this town, "If I got plumbers, better be watched and controlled." And so he stepped up and said, "Okay, we're going to control the plumbers." Next was electricians. My buddies and I stayed on city council until electricians were controlled, legalized, and monitored. And after that, the ball got dropped, and it didn't go anywhere for years. And I tossed each one of the Democrats especially, and I've had to give me your word that you support this legislation, including former mayors and the current ones. And I hope to name this Bill the Martin Bill. My idea is supported by the Athens Chamber of Commerce. The high department of, Department of Agriculture guesstimates that there's about $40 million generated within the city limits of this town by illegal contractors just not reported to the city government. $40 million. It's not having tax paid on it. My company's been paying taxes for 26 years in this city. In the state of Ohio, if you perform that service or you serve that good, sell that good, you have to be registered, and there's a thing called a standard. All trades in the state is held to a standard. Debbie Phillips came in this room, sitting here, passed legislation that if you want to work for the city of Athens, you have to be in a program. My business was the first one in the state of Ohio to apply for that, and I also had the first young man in the state of Ohio currently enrolled in an apprenticeship program underneath me for two years. Because of that, I come here to get my spiel, then I'll go home and rest. People asked me for years, "Who should be doing this? Any trades? If she comes in here to watch windows for a living, he comes in here to paint, pour concrete, drill a hole in a wall, hook up a sewer pipe, whatever trade comes in this city needs to be monitored and controlled by the city, regardless of the trade. Anybody under 18 years old should be left alone. Hell, you know what it's like now trying to find a teenager to do work, they know such things. So might as well go out there and work a little, yeah." And the last thing I'll say before leaving. I feel that what the city should do is, if a person wants to come in here, we have to watch them. Jack watched the plumbers. Jack would just get on the phone, raise hell to Mayor, took code and say, "Come here, you got a scab plumber in town. If I got a chuck, them boys will run right over and bust them right now, say, 'Get your license or get out of the city.'" I'd like to see you make it so when they come to the city to get their license, that they have what's called payroll. An employer has to pay payroll. You have to pay unemployment workers' compensation, workman's compensation, federal compensation. They have to show proof if they're self-employed, if they are going to have deductions out of their paycheck for social security. It's a tremendous burden to be an employer to pay people. It's nice to have employees, but it costs a lot of money to tax them. I feel that if a tradesperson comes in here, they must show proof of that. Don't let them buffalo you. Have them show you them certificates from the state, say, "Yeah, I'm paid up here. Yeah, here's my $1 million worth of insurance. Yeah, I'm in a program." And then once they show proof of that, you tax them unless you do for everything. And David Glossy asked me in 1984, he's sitting right there with Nancy's there, and he said, "How much would you pay to do that in the city?" And I said, "$100 bill. I think that's fair, and thanks all, I appreciate it.
We just put your name down with a whereas, giving you credit. We just put a whereas on, I just put a whereas on this, giving you credit.
You're a big help to do that.
Aw, gee. Okay, well, we put it down.
We're erasing it right now.
$100 instead.
Thank you very much.
Kevin, it's nice to see you out in the bell.
Yes.
Is there any other audience comments or anything?
Drop that one.
Do you want to ask this question?
No, I really, I think we need to clarify exactly what we're doing here because I feel there's a lot of ambiguity. And, you know, I'm not going to jump until I know.
The other thing is, why not Boca? Boca was the thing we have in the subdivision ranks, and I just wanted to know why it's gone.
Doesn't exist anymore.
Okay. That's a good reason.
There's an international building code, there's another code.
The international building code hasn't been adopted by the state of Ohio either.
Because we were told that by our previous, whatever.
And we, we had a meeting the other day...
Zoning inspector, whatever it was, chief cook and bottle washer down at planning and development. It was more than just a zoning inspector.
Right. And in the Title 31, it's written such that when new things become adopted by the state, then it's automatically adopted by the city.
I think it's also that way in the subdivision ranks.
The way I have it in there right now, the residential code and the building code both, if we were to ever start a building code or the state would still handle the commercial projects, and I've got the residential code in there that we would be adopting, excluding the administrative chapter, chapter one of that code. And if we started a building department, then we would just adopt their ordinance and have it all set up, and we would stake that exemption out, and we'd be ready to go.
Right. Now, we need to also make sure that any subdivision regulations correspond with this. Focus in there, so we need to change those, Paula, at the same time, so we ferret, ferret those out in our pages of subdivision. Any other questions?
You.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Wile.
So when you say you want more things worked out, do you want a procedure put in place? Is that what you're asking?
Well, that would be an administrative function. I would like people to stop saying that somehow this registration is going to do something for people that have grievances other than reveal problems. I don't see how it can.
I think it...
You're promising, I was thinking, you're promising more than you can deliver.
I don't think we're promising that we will cure the ills. I think we'll promise that we can track good contractors versus bad. And of course, good and bad is always relative to some people because, you know, whether they pay taxes or not is good or bad, whether they do fine work is good or bad.
Taxes, okay, that's not an issue, but the quality of the work and the grievances, I just think it's not fair. And I'm, I've gotten in trouble for saying "not fair" before recently, so I should maybe watch after.
Well, okay. Again, I think we're trying to make sure that we have some control over what goes on. I don't think we can cure all the ills. The police don't stop all the crime, and we spend a good chunk of money on that. So should we abandon that process as well?
Speaking in hyperbole again.
I'm just asking philosophical questions here.
I think what Nancy is addressing is this idea of putting in complaints. And I think that what Paula has said about how people, the process that complaints are put in for rental permits can act as a model for this. So maybe that needs to be addressed. Whether that's addressed in the, in the ordinance itself, I'm not sure, or whether it needs to just be discussed among us, understanding that that's an administrative way of looking at this. I think that that's...
Well, we do have four or five parts of revocation listed in here as to how your license can be revoked.
Remember, we're not talking about a license, right?
Excuse registration.
Yeah, but you've got to stop saying that word. That's what's driving me nuts. It is not a license.
And I've sat here for many years in the audience where about every three years, somebody come in with a tale of bad construction standards. The last town hall meeting, a contractor got up and said, "We should improve our construction standards." If we want to improve our construction standards, we have to set the standards, not only for the code part, but also for the work part. Again, I have a circular saw, I have a pickup truck, I actually have a square, a carpenter's square, and a couple of hammers and a drill. And that means I can go out on the road and tell somebody I can do their root, which I know perfectly well I can't, but I can certainly tell them that. Or I can do their gutter and see if it's copper and disappear with it immediately.
But at the very least, this is also proving to people that they have the required bond and worker compensation, which I think is a big step because some of those people who would be fly-by-night, who don't have those, and you can say, "Do you have your permit?" And you say, "Oh, I don't, I don't have a permit for the city," and say, "Well, I'm not," you know. So I think that that right there is kind of weeding out the type of people who have a square and a pickup truck, theoretically.
Well, if they can make $20 an hour, that's one day's work, isn't it? $100.
But they also have to have the bond and the, you know, which is, which is an important part. I think that's being missed in this discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Is that, you know, this is part of the registration, is that you have the required bond, and so...
And the amount you pay long-term is all relative to the amount of work you do. Basically, you got your $100 application, and your $100 is about what a bond's going to cost. Your work is constant, liability insurance will be reflective of the amount of work you do. So the more you do, the more you pay.
Right. So, okay. Is, is there other questions? Did you, do we have yours? You had your answer, your hand up.
I just, I'll just say that, again, I'll echo what Member Bain is saying. I thought that our original discussion was just a registration, and we kept saying that's all we were going to do. I could be convinced that to go a further step and have some way of rating the work that's done also, but I think that's going to involve a whole lot more discussion. Or you're going to tell us how it's going to happen.
Or would you like that portion removed? I feel like we heard tonight from an industry group and other independent contractors, they absolutely support this. So when I say like that aspect removed, it would just be a depository of information that would be able to...
It's more good lookout.
And when, back to the whole burden, people will be calling the code office, saying, "Does this," and, you know, "Individual or company, are they registered?" So there'll be follow-up along those ways.
But is that a responsibility we really want to take? I mean, if it's just a registry, couldn't we put it online or else have the card? I mean, you know, the problem is, you're relating the situation of the itinerary guy going door-to-door, who's a ripoff agent, but that isn't going to be solved by this at all. I mean, that person will still be circulating in the city. He may not find his victim as easily.
I think with some outreach efforts, that it would, indeed, will be assisting other residents.
I just would like to be absolutely sure, be absolutely certain what it is we're promising and why. That's all I am after. And, you know, it's great that the industry group is for us, but we're really after somebody that's not in that industry group. And so, you know, it's like saying, "Oh, yes, the teachers in charter schools are, Debrusis, the OEA."
The requirements of the bonding and what have you are going to be the surety for the, yes, for these activities.
And we're going to check it?
They'll have to file that annually.
Well, I mean, we've had bonds before, bonds and then they're bond.
One of the things that we can do on the comments, like so many of the online things do, Emily's list and others, is...
Angie's.
Angie's list, rather, Emily's list.
She's got one too.
She's got one too. But people can make comments, and there's an opportunity for the contractor to make their response. And maybe just allow that to happen and stay out of it.
Angie's List is only in Columbus, so...
But, I mean, that could be something that we can look into at one point.
You can start Nancy's list here now.
I have more than enough to do, I don't need anything else.
There's another whereas, Chris.
Whereas an idea blossoms into a whole new set of ideas.
Eliot, you had a last comment.
I don't want to have the last comment, but it seems, the suggestion, you know, to put comments online or to keep a file somewhere, I have to agree, I think it could become either a lot of work or something messy that doesn't actually give the information that we intended to. And without someone to vet them or to actually look into the complaints, it seems to me that would be an undue burden on our current city staff to try to keep this up to date.
You know, I think as much as we can do is just guarantee that the people are registered with their licenses and have the proper bonding and insurance, and we can just reassure them that they have the proper qualifications and/or done the proper paperwork to do what they're doing. And that's reassuring them that much, at least, when you're hiring an electrician, you know the guy's licensed to be doing that. Last thing anyone wants is faulty wiring in their house, so, which we're doing now. And if anyone asks, we probably do get, I would say, one to two calls a week just on the plumbers and electricians right now, are these people licensed in the city? So it's, there is a check and balance, checks and balance system going on, and I think that's what helps across the board with every one of them.
So can you look at the revocation section and address some of these concerns? Because I think there's a concern of having the complaints and the complaint system and how you identify whether we do it at one point with a computer system where people can put in written complaints and that, that there's an opportunity to respond? Or, I mean, there's, there's, we need to be very sure that, that we're putting forward that as a city, we are assuring that they have insurance and bonds and that they're, you know, have the proper licenses by the state or whatever, and that it's not a quality assurance that this contractor does quality work. Does that make sense?
Yes. It would be basically taking out the faulty or defective workmanship, and we just eliminate that, that part. The other four would, are in compliant or, you know, building where you're not supposed to or without proper permits and so on and so forth. Building illegally would revoke your license. Registration. I'll get a yes.
Does that answer your concerns?
No. Qualifications, I mean, we, we present things that were presented to us from someone else. We don't know that they have insurance next week. I mean, I think the city should take absolutely no responsibility except to act as an agent for accumulating information. You know, because I, I just don't know that we have the wherewithal to do it right now.
But isn't that the same thing with an electrician and a plumber? We don't know whether their licenses...
But they are licensed. The state is the one that does, does the testing. And that's a different matter from a wood butcher or something like that.
Their insurance, when it expires, we would, we would put it on Citizen Service or tracking system, and when it expires, it would let us know, and we would contact them and tell them they need a new certificate of insurance to come to us.
Do you do that right now with homeowners and rental permits?
Yep.
Because they didn't ask me today about insurance.
No, not insurance, no, not on rentals, not, not the insurance.
I mean, that's, that's certainly a place where we have some liability because we're saying we're inspecting them, and if we're not doing it there, why would we do it here? I mean, I can understand why you're eager to do this, I just would like to make sure we're pretty clean on what our intentions are. I don't mean that it is clean dirty, but I mean crisp, clear.
I think that there's support for the, we just need to make sure that the wording demonstrates what we really intend.
We can always get better if we get to that point, add to it.
Right. And I think that, following what Mr. Lang said, is that the idea for the costs, we need to demonstrate what the cost, the true costs are so that we can... And I like Nancy's idea of having one fee for, for single people who are just a single contractor, and then maybe a higher fee for people who have employees, because that seems like an extra burden of paperwork. Does that address people's concerns? So, does that address people's concerns? Eliot?
I think the fee would be contingent upon what kind of tracking we do end up with. Again, my, every 30 days or so, I do see a $50 vending license come through. This is for a single person to actually operate a hot dog stand for 30 days out on the street. I don't know how many hot dogs you have to sell to make James meet there as his individual vendor-type person. But that's, to me, is not, $100 a year is not over the top. If we're going to track this and have a file, if we're going to end up on a website for this, go talk to some webmaster and tell, ask them how much per hour they charge to do something like this.
I think with what Mr. Lang said, we need to...
Well, on the grass cutting, I pretty much did that last summer, and it was, it's in $100 in our code, and we've reduced it for many years to be what the cost was, plus $25. And taking a look at it this year, coming spring and summer, we're probably going to do $100 because that's about where it's at internally for us to send out certified mail, go out and do the preliminary inspection, do a follow-up inspection. We're running $100 internally for something like that, so I don't see where this, you know, will be a whole lot different by the time we do the paperwork and the internal stuff that we need to do.
But I think that there is an issue of part-time. I think that that's something that needs to be... I understand Mr. Gosney's concern, but I also think that it's very important to look at the other issue of the benefits of permitting for many individuals. So I think that's another discussion that we can have internally.
I visualize this as mostly self-enforcing. As Kevin Martin mentioned, that the plumbers and the electricians pretty much monitor themselves. I see, my visualization is a placard about the size, quarter of the size of that to be on the truck, and another one to be in your billfold to show you can show the resident that you're actually certified. Put one on the truck so people can tell, obviously. I think one of the things I find is when I see a building permit, I see construction going on in the city, and I do not see a building permit on the window, I call these guys, okay? That's me doing it. I assume anybody whose bread and butter is being taken out of their mouths by people who would fly by night would do the same thing. So enforcement's not the side of it that I worry about so much.
It's the paperwork.
The paperwork. If it costs $100 just to get a weed letter out and get some stuff done, that gives you an idea of what we're talking about in terms of fees. You know, and this is, again, I think in terms of quality control, it's probably the part-timers that probably have the most lapses in quality control. And I don't say that because I'm picking on them, but the fact is, it's common knowledge that hospitals that do the most quadruple bypasses have the higher success rates. Does that make sense? So therefore, you want to go to a hospital that does a lot of them rather than a hospital that has a little, few of them. The same thing applies to carpentry, I believe. There are good carpenters out there who do it as entertainment, who do quality work and very little of it. Somebody who does theater at the same time as carpentry probably doesn't do as quickly as somebody who does it day in and day out.
They're also not going door-to-door offering their services.
True. If they're good, they're busy all the time.
So can we, can you take into account what we've said tonight and then send those out to everybody?
I've made several notes, and I'll get with John.
And then we can have a discussion by email?
Sure.
And see whether we need to bring it up at the next committee meeting, which I hope not. And if not, we can...
I love talking with you.
So is there any more questions, concerns? Okay. My next agenda item is small and short. I promise. There's several revocable, renewal, revocable licenses that have come up. One at 90 South Schaefer, which is submitted by Ohio University. 35 Hawking Street submitted by Baker and Lovell, and 50 West State Street submitted by John Wharton. 50 West State Street is for parking. 90 Schaefer Street is for the ATM that we all love and use at the credit union, and 35 Hawking is for also parking. All the paperwork is put forward and has been completed. Everybody has signed off on them, and I expect to bring this up for ordinance on Monday. No real miscellaneous unless anybody else has.
On to the Safety Committee. Sherry Kuhn, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you may remember, last week Molly, a community assistant from the Office of Off-Campus Living at Ohio University spoke to us about Earth Day, an event that they're planning to have on Earth Day. And I received an email today from another community assistant, Alyssa Rice, and they are requesting the closing of Washington Street between Court and College Streets to be closed on April 22, 2010, from 3:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. The event will actually be from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., so that gives them an hour to set up and an hour to clean up after. She said that the parking garage would remain open for traffic and that they are working with Ron Lucas so that they comply with all the requirements and so forth. Their second choice is Washington Street between Court and Congress. So what is your pleasure?
Have they talked to the Department of the Police and said about this?
They've had a meeting with Ron Lucas, yes.
And there are no concerns about access to the parking garage?
The parking garage will be open, I believe.
It's actually a half a street closure. They're going to close it from Court to the front of the parking garage.
Okay.
And also maintain a 14-foot far lane so that you people can come up and access parking garage.
Okay. So the impact's really... Go ahead, sir.
Access the parking garage only from one direction?
Mm-hmm.
So you don't have, like, people driving down all the time?
And I think your conversation, again, in terms of impact, really what you're talking about is the bank, which will be closed at that time, Chase Bank. I think the conversation got together whether we're going to close off the alleyway there for Jimmy John's delivery truck cars. And the church is on the other side, of course, so it's not going to have a large impact in terms of traffic. This would be optimal. Conversation with Assistant Service Safety Directors, that they pretty much had most of their work done.
It would seem to me that that would be a better choice than closing between Congress and Court because you have the sheriff's department and so forth.
Yeah. And a whole series of businesses there.
Mm-hmm. That's right. Right. So if nobody objects, are there any other comments?
Timing-wise, do we need an emergency clause in this, or do we...
I think yes.
We may want to have it. Get together with the clerk of council and march out the days, because in fact, this takes 30 days to go into effect.
Okay.
So if we're considering that kind of...
You need both a suspension of the rules and an emergency clause. So, and we said that at last meeting.
Yes. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go forward then with that on Monday. The other thing I have is just a brief little report on the noise and roof ordinances. We've been, the ad hoc committee has been meeting on that, and there was another, there was another meeting on that. There were three proposed ordinances. Now there are two. There's, they are not going forward with banning stages in residential areas. We're not quite ready, though, to, at this moment, to go forward with the other two, which would be the roof and the noise. But stay tuned for further developments. Does anybody have any miscellaneous?
I have a question. Are you, are they hoping to have the police have this in place for spring best time?
That's what, that's what the committee was hoping for, yes.
So we may be looking at at least an emergency clause.
We may be looking at not having it in time.
Or an emergency clause.
I sort of maybe, I sort of hate to go that route, but...
I would be very careful doing that on something as controversial.
Right. I'm really not comfortable...
I think it would need all readings.
All three readings.
But the emergency clause.
Pardon me? Oh, the emergency clause.
That's right.
Yeah, right. Right, that would be, right.
It should take effect in 30 days, or at signing instead of 30 days.
But not suspension, but we can put an emergency clause in.
Have the emergency clause that goes...
That would be a possibility.
And still have six, have the three readings.
That's definitely a possibility.
What would be the nature of the emergency?
For the safety and welfare of the community.
This is, I'm thinking about readings will be, our third reading will be the last one in April, I believe. Couldn't be before that unless we have some special sessions. I just, I did have one other thing to say, but...
I'm looking at a calendar. You'd have to have a special session on the 5th Monday of March to do it, and then pass it on, let's see, that's, yeah, the first Monday in April would be the 5th, and you would have to pass it then with an emergency clause to do it. And I'm not hearing tonight what it is. So, you know, if you want all three readings, I don't think the calendar is going to permit it at this point.
It could be a problem.
Yeah. Unless you want special sessions, and again, that's problematic on something as controversial, in my opinion.
What I want to say is that I had read in the paper that council is backing down from this ordinance, and I asked council members who was having this discussion, we don't, it was just, we don't have an ordinance. There's nothing in front of council. An ad hoc committee is meeting, and they'll present something to council, who will then decide yea or nay, and then...
Right. Council hasn't backed down at all yet.
Yeah. Kind of a headline, and I, it didn't make any sense to me. And I think, I, we all appreciate the hard work that this ad hoc committee is going through, and...
Yes, they've worked very hard.
The time that they're spending and the work they're putting in on amendments is evident in the revisions that they've gone through. So...
It's a very dedicated, hard-working group.
And that's wonderful, but it hasn't come to council yet. We don't really know what's going on.
Right. I agree.
I don't have any miscellaneous unless someone else has some miscellaneous.
On to the City Services Committee. Nancy Bain, Chair.
Because I thought it was going to be for hours.
You're lucky you got back in line.
I hear what is happening. We don't have anything to back down from, that's it. Okay, mine will be short.
Well, you need to take some lessons from Ms. Kuhn here.
So you have two ordinances.
Because I have ordinances to present.
You each have an ordinance yourself, right? All members of council?
Yes.
And the first one is, what was it?
Do you have some?
It says 350. Hi, well, let's just, I want to give it to him. Are you going to take it up? Yep. And this will be, this is the other one, Chris. I'm a fired Abby, and I'm good at that.
What am I getting?
She was... They have them all.
We can share this one, we can have this one.
So, as we have noted, the City of Athens has potentially some big changes in its solid waste provisions, probably over the next five years or so. And one of the things that we are in the position of looking at is that we really have very little control over what goes on in some sense because the operations that we use are controlled by our county commissioners, and they've been pretty good, really good. Lenny Eliasen, Mark Sullivan, Larry Payne, they backed us. I don't go to the meetings, I know the mayor does, but it's very much up in the air what's going to be going on. We have a two-year contract. In order to try and preserve our recycling pay as you throw, at least for the time being, all of my constituents who wrote me with suggestions, I'll get back to you on that. Lots of people are really strong in my word about it. They don't want, they were really already apprehensive. But what we've, what we're doing here is raising the recycling fee by a dollar for at least the next two years. The reasoning is given in the whereas. As there's been a sizable reduction in marketable recycling goods, we have a problem with that. And in order to continue to support our curbside program, it's necessary to increase user support fees because we are paying as we go. And the one thing I would point out to you is that the average residential garbage bill in most cities is around $20. So add the 350 to your current garbage bill, and you're still lower than that. We have one of the lowest rates in town, so, or in the county. I should have been more showy and got some, I brought my magic marker along and was going to do it during this long discussion Sherry was going to have, didn't get to do it. But fundamentally, that's what is going on here. I didn't hear many complaints last time, but if you have something right now you want to jump up and down about, have at it. My Tylenol isn't for it yet, but it's still there. Are you with me?
Yes, absolutely. How many, how many garbage pickups are there? How many units are affected by that?
We're talking both residential and commercial. And so, because the number's around 6,000.
Six, okay.
And that's plus or minus. I mean, it depends how, but, so we're going to bring some extra money into the system. I hope, you know, that it evolves and continues to evolve. I know we had a meeting, and Alana said, "You haven't been at any of these meetings." I said, "Because we haven't changed anything for so long, so it's probably, you know, we're definitely due for some changes." So they're not forced on us, I have my second offering, which is, and I'll read the whereas's here. In 1989, ordinance 06989 set the maximum number of rubbish and refuse hauler licenses available within the city at five. And that would be commercial haulers, and commercial is defined in the code in a very strange way, but that's what we deal with because that's what's in the ORC. And small history lesson here, when we started looking at garbage 20 years ago, one of the big problems was probably a third or more of the people in the city were not paying for garbage. They were throwing it in someone else's can, or taking it downtown, or taking it to the university. And there are still people that do that a little bit, but everybody pays something that is a residential user. I'm more confident saying that now than I was three years ago. And the five were, and what we did was, we contracted out the residential hauling, and we had a downtown franchise which was given to a big commercial entity, and they could not handle it, so they, eventually it came back to us. And then we had the five haulers. They were all small operators. Probably many of them worked very hard, and they were gobbled up by the big guys. And so now we're down to two haulers, three haulers. Depends on how you count it. And they're all pretty big entities. And the gobbling up happened over time, and it was select Troy Hyatt and the Rices and a number of other people, and then more recently, Mr., what's his name, Holla? What was that guy's name? What was the last one, the small guy?
Macarios.
Macarios, yes. And so what we have then in the second whereas, we moved to reduce the number through non-renewal in 2007. So what we're doing in this ordinance is setting up some notification to the three big guys that are our haulers, or two and a half, one is, two are big and, well, one isn't licensed, so I don't really know how we talk about that. The people that are currently licensed by us will have a license expire on the 30th of June 2011, 2011. And what we're going to do with this ordinance is say, "We're going to probably change this a little bit. You may be included, but we're not going to go on the way it is right now." And the way it is right now is a relatively modest charge, and charge whatever you want, go wherever you want to go. And so I suspect in the summer, if we ever get off the amplified sound and all the other things we're doing and all the, we can sit down, because we have lots of time. All we're saying is, you can continue to collect for the next 15 months, but in sometime in the not-too-distant future, we're going to come out with something the administration wants to put forward as a possibility for redoing the commercial. There's some other reasons to do this. One of them would be, if the administration doesn't want to do it, you know, just basically a revision to... want to do it, you know, it's just basically a revision to the current situation. We can also just reinstate it if we want to, but if you look at the solid waste district and the commissioner's involvement, we are in a position where it seems very difficult to predict the future and it's not going to be the way it was in the past, I'm pretty sure. So, I think we need to be ready and this would be a way for us to consolidate both residential and commercial perhaps into, into zones or have some sort, we need a plan, but we need to notify them that we're planning. We can't make the plan and come and let them know at the end, you know, say, oh, by the way, in June you're not going to have a license anymore because we're going to do it this way. So, we may roll it again, but fundamentally that's what we're doing, or I would like to do here. I don't, I said something like this last time, but fundamentally that's what it, what it's doing, starting up the process of change that we are, that has been thrust on us by the solid waste district or whatever, with no preconceived notions on where this is going to end. Anybody?
Wow.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Member Bean. So, you're proposing that we begin this discussion and have this dialogue to really wrestle with it and look at it from all angles, all sides to consider what we want to.
I actually am working on PowerPoint, yes.
Okay, and I appreciate that, I do because.
And I've done some research.
No, I do, I appreciate that because on, on one level, I'm wondering if we need to increase rates.
We do.
On, on a lot of these, yeah.
On the garbage, yes.
Yeah, yeah, and so I support that, if that's one of the things you're considering.
Well, I would, I would do it, I just wanted to get the recycling fee up so it can be moved, so we can not lose another person. I mean, one of the advantages of the current system is it's creating jobs in our area that are still here, so. And it's at a reduced rate, they, their jobs with benefits. One of the things I will tell you is that many of the people who are involved in this don't pay benefits to their employees, our, the people that work for us get benefits. Yep.
I was just going to add that in, in a lot of the neighborhoods, the concerns we hear, which I know that the mayor and the code department is well aware of, is issues of trash and that there's an abundant amount of lit, excuse me, of litter that's in our neighborhoods and on the streets and in the yards and so I'm wondering or curious about.
That would certainly be something we would enter into, maybe be up and move away from the dollar a year charge and fund it out of fees on, that you could charge on the commercial side. Move it that way. I mean, there's a lot of possib, there are a lot of possibilities, where there are real, some real constraints. One thing I would like to do if I were the god of garbage, I would put in standardized containers. No, no, it's, God has no gender. No, all right, if I were in charge of.
You're the queen of garbage.
The sarina.
Sarina. But I would, I, you know, and titles aside, I would go for, I'm sure there's some other titles I've earned tonight. Garbage cans that are uniform, you know, with a.
With lids.
Yeah, and I think that would especially be important in some areas and I think that uptown garbage, uptown clean committee was, Rogers showed them those and they got all excited, but then the crash happened and now we're in crash mode and so we have to get our, back on our feet right now. I mean, right now, the Athens County Recycling should be putting aside 10% for capital improvements and I don't think they can, I think they're so strapped and I think reorganization of the university has probably reduced their fees from the university by about 50,000. I mean, situations are very bad and so I think that we really have to do new diligence here and I hope you'll support this effort because it will be, we won't be going up to the end saying, guess what, you're not going to have a license next week. We're going to say, there may be licenses, but they may be allocated. There's some other arguments I give for this, I would say, gee, one thing we can do is make sure that it's a fair, a fair assessment of fees. I think from talking to the business people, I know some people pay really lots of money for relatively minimal service and then there are other people who are paying quite a, you know, quite a reasonable amount and so it'd be nice to be able to kind of even that out. We once tried, but there was no way to enforce it, we made, we put things in the code and they weren't enforced, so we just cut them out, you know, this much for that many cubic yards. That was back in the day. So, that's, another advantage would be, I think the street, the city engineer, street director said that he, that he'd read, and I've read too, that each garbage truck moving over the street creates is the equivalent of 30,000 cars. So, and that's, and I've seen that stat too, and like all stats are subject to interpretation, but I was working at my food pantry this morning, late morning after class and a big truck comes down the alley and I could believe 30,000 cars for a year with operation of that. So, in other words, we could reduce the amount of wear and tear on our streets by zoning out the city as a possibility. So, there were different ways to reduce the, the problem and make it a win-win. I hate to say that, but we could actually make this a win-win and come out of it strongly. But I just don't want to come out of it vulnerable and not, and having to take whatever is dished. That's what I'd like to see. So, Paul?
I'm aware at the last meeting, solid waste meeting, there is discussion that I think the EPA is going to tack on some money for the tipping fees per ton.
Right.
Of course, that's going to, the charge will probably pass along to us along the way too, so you have to look down the road saying, in terms of the, the rates for the solid waste, we'll have to change eventually. I know the solid waste district is also talking about trying to increase the tipping fees for the in district and out of district and out of state funds, but again, the EPA one that's going to come out of this, we don't get a piece of, but it will, the cost will be passed along to us, I imagine.
Now, if each of us produces about a ton a year of garbage, which is what you say, three or four pounds times the, a day times the whole amount a year, so it would be about $5 each person.
Also, in, in peripheral to this, I know that we are slowly running low on recycled bins and we'll, we'll have to order some more.
There are not some out there?
Oh, there's plenty out there, but we're, we're getting low. I think we're, we're back to the last, last fifth of, of what we have or maybe less.
You've been very generous and it's been good.
I think it's, well, that's it. Originally, we, when I was on council, we started up that bin, I thought all those would be gone by now, I'm surprised it took as long to, to get them out there as.
They're wonderful bins, those of you that need them, come and get them quick so we can order them quickly, right? Oh, not now.
Well, that, that's a question of our funds too, for the garbage fund, I mean, that's something you're going to have to look at too. If we're, if we expect our contract to go up to reflect the costs being absorbed by the Athens Hocking Recycle District Company, we have, it'll get passed along to us. I mean, last two years ago, we took a hit because of the gas, but we can fully expect other costs to come and play.
Each of us will have to pay our $5.
We buy the bins. We buy the, yes, I know, yes, we buy the bins, so we need something in there.
Yeah, and we must have charged for the bins, but that.
You don't charge now?
No, we don't.
No, no, that was a.
The idea is recycle, don't.
And they're, and it comes out of the fees.
Make them pay in addition to what you're paying.
Yes.
Thank you. As part of this discussion as well, concern that I have in the fees, particularly to the dumpsters behind a lot of the, the bars and uptown businesses, and this is a concern expressed to Member Gosling the other day, was that a number of our bars are not recycling, that the bottles end up in dumpsters. If you're up at 2:00 in the morning, you can hear all the cans, the garbage cans within the bar getting dumped into the dumpster around back. So, my, my understanding is that we can recycle green glass, white glass, all, all the glasses now, and one time we had limitations there, but that has since changed and a lot of businesses are, are not using that service or not making use of that, so I.
We can certainly improve our recycling.
Exactly, exactly, right, right.
All those green students can go and check the garbage and start.
Right, or punish, or punish those with higher rates that aren't willing to do so.
I agree.
Okay, and the last one, in terms of the other one about the franchise and other companies, I, I probably need to get some homework, maybe talk to Patrick Lang about the, you know, the authority for us to actually restrict companies coming in. I think we have that authority, but I do not know.
We've exercised it for 30 years.
Yeah, oh, yes, but not, not total, like, you know, I mean, as it's, it's not a total monopoly type situation.
Oh, it used to be a total monopoly.
Yes, we used to be, but we were running it ourselves.
I, I hope Debbie, did you check this with Pat?
No.
Well, we aren't necessarily setting up a total monopoly yet, that's just one option.
I know it's an option.
Well, we could theoretically, although I don't see it happening, go into the business ourselves again and pick up garbage and I would think that there would probably be a foolhardy effort, but you would, but it, I can't imagine it wouldn't be possible.
Oh, yeah, think of the photo ops where all the city council members and mayors.
Well, yeah, I mean, especially if there's a strike, you can all imagine that. Okay.
Just had a quick comment, I certainly understand the need to increase rates that we charge as our costs increase for the city. I was contacted by a resident that preferred the fee go onto a garbage fee as opposed to recycling fee to keep that as low as possible and so people feel they're getting a great deal with recycling, they might be more encouraged to. To be honest, I don't think it makes a big difference, so I'm not, I don't have strong feelings one way or the other, but my preference would be that it go on the trash can fees as opposed to recycling.
Those will go up too.
Not this time, Ralph.
But soon, coming soon, soon, ordinance near you.
But this is, this is more honest because it is the recycling effort that is having a hardest time at this.
Right, and it's, it's not unique to Athens, Ohio, believe me.
We also don't understand what benefit that has financially versus the trash, but.
The more we talk about it, the better it is. All right, I'm done. Okay, Jim, hop back.
Finance personnel, last week, meeting with the auditor and the mayor's office, there were three appropriations that we were asked about. Did, did you all get copies of this? No, no, okay. Well, anyway, first, first of all, the auditor's office told us that they had received the, this is February 2010, remember, they just received the fourth quarter billing for 2009 for the police and fire pension contributions that the city is required to make and we are in one fund about $12,000 short, making it a payment, and another fund $22,000 short, police and fire pensions. And so, we need to appropriate money into those, into those funds. Auditor, I, I assume that one of those is police.
Right, one is police and one is fire.
Yeah.
The 12,000 is the police and the 22,000 is the fire. As I said, we might have, if we'd been paying attention, I guess, at the end of the year, but of course, that's budget time and closeout time and all kinds of other things. Had seen that, we'll make an effort to see that coming this year, although I suspect that that is due to the 27th pay that happened last year, that we came up short in several budget line items because of that. But no, our, our bill actually came, yeah, at the end of February, we received it last Monday, a week ago, and it's due the end of March and we need to appropriate about $34,000 to, to pay our share of those pension funds.
So, that's one appropriation. Mayor, are you getting ready to say something?
Oh, yeah, well, she said everything about that particular encumbrance, or rather appropriations, so that's covered.
Okay, the next appropriation.
Well, of course, we want to suspend rules on that, you know that too.
I'm, I'm sorry, yes.
Because it's due.
Payments are due by the end of March, so we need to pass this appropriation under suspension next week so that we can get that done. And the mayor is looking at the parking garage fund and some needed concrete work to be done this summer and the renovations fund needs about $45,000 appropriated into it to do work in the parking garage this summer. This is a continuing process, this is not the big repair that we did, what, two years ago?
How long ago to that? It's been a long time.
Several years ago, but this is a continuing, paying attention to stuff in the parking garage so we don't be facing huge repairs. Mayor, anything else you wanted to say about that?
We're just having estimate 45, we have to, we're going to get somebody in to look at the concrete, some of the spaulding that's occurring, some of the repair that needs to be done and we'll go from there. I'm, I'm probably give, the fund is fairly good and I really wanted to do small incremental repairs rather than the large one we did many years ago, we had to float a bond on that. Eventually, it'd be nice to get somebody to do a engineering evaluation of it, but I don't think we're there yet, but the idea is to look at, say, okay, what needs to be repaired right now. The other thing, of course, is eventually with the, we have that energy upgrade, efficiency upgrade going along for the city buildings, this may be included in it someday. I would think it'd be part of the package, I don't know if we really have to float a bond for that if we have money in our reserves for it. Let's see, where is it over here? It's in, I forget the number for garbage here, a garage, parking garage is 3, 730, so we have resources about 340. And again, that has to be used for parking garage maintenance of the parking garage and all the things that go with it. So, if there's, I think 45, we'll give us some fixes this year. Eventually, we might want to start thinking about doing energy efficiency programs within the parking garage, not, not this year, next year. Probably be rolled in with all the other building projects we were going to do, we're talking about doing. So, I'm off subject enough, at 45 to, to get the concrete down.
It's nice to know what's happening in the future.
What?
It's good to know what's happening in the future.
Okay.
Okay, and I think this is a note from Assistant Auditor Ray Hazlitt.
Yes.
And Auditor, could you talk about this? This is, we're talking about legal fees involved with the rec foreclosure down in the West State area that we've been dealing with for a long time and looking at possible finishing of this. Auditor, we need to transfer some money between funds.
We do, and this is a little bit complicated, but it just has to do with funds. We do see, I think there will, there is a light at the end of the tunnel for our closing for the possible contamination on West State Street. We're still working with the EPA and we have contracted with a legal firm and who is helping us. We need more money to cover those fees, we need $10,000 to cover the fees through April, we'll probably need another 40,000 to cover the, go through, finish out this negotiation that we're going through. There's not enough money in 748 right now, which is the EPA litigation fund. The other issue with that is the fact that that is the dollar fee that everybody pays, so we collect about $80,000 a year in that fund for revenue. We have been using $80,000 to pay down the debt. That debt, that note is due at the end of May. Let's see, I've got the letter here. We still owe $195,000 on that. We believe, meaning the Deputy Auditor, Ray Hazlitt and I, that we can't pay 80,000 this year and continue to pay for these legal fees. We should pay down something and then we roll the balance of the note over, which we've done for years. His suggestion is to borrow money from the cap fund, about 40 or 50,000 to cover the legal fees and then we probably would still only be paying down about 40,000 in May because that's all the money that will be in, collected in that fund. I guess it depends on council and if they want to borrow the legal fees and how much, because we've already spent legal fees out of that, we won't have 80,000 at the end of May like we did last year, we will have maybe 40. And then we have the legal fees on top of that, so we need 80 or 90,000 in there, which we won't have the end of May. Does that make sense? So, we can pay down less, but we're going to need those legal fees probably this summer, in the next few months anyway. So, our idea was to borrow money from the cap fund because they do have some money in there now and include in the ordinance a repayment plan of, say, $5,000 a year. However, if that's. that, if our issue gets settled and we have a fine, we most likely will have to borrow money for the fine. We can borrow additional money to pay back the cap fund if we want. However, council wants to handle that. Otherwise, we have borrowed, the city has borrowed from the cap fund in the past, and the auditors require a repayment schedule. Last year, we were able to pay back eighty or ninety thousand that we owed out of two-hundred-and-forty borrowed originally. We were on a ten thousand dollar a year payment plan, but we got some reimbursement from FEMA and had some money, and we went ahead and paid that off to cap. I don't know if you remember that, but, so there's nothing that says you can't pay it back early, so if we put a minimum five thousand dollars a year, we need to pay back something every year. The auditors don't want us just borrowing money from another fund and leaving them hanging. So, as I said, we could pay it back early, so, but that would be our suggestion, is to borrow forty or fifty thousand from the cap fund, so we have our legal fee money now and are able to pay down on the note. Of course, the other, another option is to not pay anything down on the note and roll the entire amount over. It's not really good business not to do something, but, you know, it's, it's an option. The other thing I will throw out there about this is that note renewal is handled by our bond council, and they prepare the paperwork, and the ordinances go through council. And so, I've already received a letter from Dennis Schwaly asking what we want to do, and what we have to do is tell him what we want to pay down, if anything, and how to handle it, so he has time to prepare the paperwork, and it goes through council, and the payment is made by May twenty-eighth. So.
And just, I'm not sure, I didn't hear you say that, that your office is suggesting that we pay twenty-five thousand dollars down on that.
Right, and actually, that was what we said last week. By May, we will have more of that dollar fee in, and we could probably pay forty thousand if you want. Twenty-five thousand, we could pay today.
We'll try for forty, and just run it up to the.
Just to get, you know, at behalf of what we've been paying, and to try to do what we can towards it, that's.
By the way, I want, Law Director Lang and Mr. Hazlitt went to EPA headquarters in Chicago not too long ago and negotiated with them to get us to this point, which is a whole lot better than we.
Than last time.
Than we were last time. So, there's been some, some really strong activity going on toward this, this finalization of this.
There's definitely progress made. Our paperwork has caught up with them. The issue is the fact that we didn't have our paperwork in every year that we were supposed to. We were not, we were in compliance, but we didn't have it on record, and so the issue now is for them to decide, you know, you know, technically, we were not in compliance, but in another way, we were. If we filed our paperwork, we would have not, you know, we have the resources.
And this preceded your term.
Yes.
Can you remind us the year?
It goes back to two thousand and one.
Two thousand and one.
Yes, this was going on when I came into office, and I will say that the paperwork is very complicated and difficult, but we should have been doing it every year, and we wouldn't be where we are, although the issue started way before I came into office.
The issue actually began in.
Two thousand and one, maybe.
Well, the paperwork one, but.
Paperwork, but I mean, the.
The issue of West State.
Eighty-five or eighty-six, or.
It was.
A long time ago.
Decades ago.
So, we think they're looking at it and trying to come to an agreement, and, you know, Law Director Lang is trying to negotiate.
And so, this is, this is an ordinance that we'll be looking at next week, talking about borrowing, moving some money from one fund to another to pay for the legal fees that we are required at this point to do, that we're looking toward an end. So, those are the three things that I have notes on. Auditor, you have something?
I do have one more that we just came up with today, if you don't mind. And this has to do with our, because we're self-insured, we're required to, sorry, this might be like, uh-oh.
Oh, my goodness.
What did you come up with now? Because we're self-insured, we are required to have our medical claims audited every three years, and it's time. However, we did not budget for that audit process this year, and so I need an appropriation for that, and I will tell you the, the most, so we just got our proposal today. And the most it will cost to have our medical claims and prescription audit would be seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars. They have a base fee plus expenses, which there's a max for expenses. So, it's like eighty-eight hundred dollars for a medical claims audit.
They're staying at your house, so.
Yeah, really, keeping costs down. I've got some empty bedrooms these days. So, it could be less than that, but it won't be more.
Okay.
So, could you explain just very quickly what they do? They just go through and make sure the right numbers were paid?
Yes.
I mean, but they literally would look at overrides on the existing system, let's say, or something, any divergences like that, or is it more just a balancing?
No, they look at quite a few things, and they work with Harrington, and, yeah.
Just wondering.
It's, I mean, this is their business and what they do. It's not, yeah, this, what they do is they medical, they audit medical claims, prescriptions, plans, things like that, because we're self-insured in both of those areas. And like I said, we're, we're not required to do this every year, but it's time again now.
Would, would this come out of eight sixty-six Internal Service Medical? I mean, would that be where we take it?
You know, I don't remember where we took it last year. I could find out, or three years ago. I could find out. I don't know if we went ahead and paid for it. I think we did, now that you say that.
It was either out of the auditor's office or it would be out of other men.
Yeah, it's either out of my office.
We could actually, yeah.
Or, yeah.
We could take it anywhere we want it, couldn't we?
Right.
Since you're editing that one.
Yeah. You know, I'll look that up. Maybe it won't have to come out of the general fund.
Yeah, that's, I mean, general funds, see that.
Mayor, you had your hand.
We do have another item. Some money appropriated, some money from the fund line, the nine-oh-two Mansfield House. Need some work to be done on that. If you look at your unappropriated balance, you got about five, five thousand, three hundred. I think we were asking about three thousand. There's some repair that needs to be done on that, or some valuation, I guess.
We made a question, you said.
So, George of Lands and Buildings mentioned that we have some structural problems on that, so we need to be dealing with it. But we didn't appropriate anything in that particular fund line whatsoever, if you looked in the budget. So, we need to put something in, in there.
Okay. Did he say what we're doing?
He's telling me that there's, I guess it's, it's those beams on the top. He says one of the beams is flexing a little bit on the roof. I'm not sure how you get a flexing wooden beam like that, but we either have to splice it or put some kind of, I think the, the fix they're talking about is maybe some iron, nice wrought iron patches on it or something like that. Again, we have some funds in that particular fund line. I went back, and I think we get, we get about fifty dollars a month for the rent of that, so there is money that's been pulled up on that. Eventually, we'll have to either discuss increasing the rent, which is a possibility, or adding some more money for, in the future. I think the activities for that house, it's ours. But right now, three thousand.
Our Rotary Club painted it, you know, washed it and molded off and painted it a couple times several years ago, so.
Do you want to do it again?
We're all doing our part.
Okay.
I think, oh.
I think that was, it's there because it was a historically significant, it's on the National Register, and usually historic significance only applies to the external. But, you know, I wonder, Paul is probably more, much more aware of this than I am, but what, is, do we have to do any hoops on this?
We do, indeed, and that's, we have an architect who's going to bring in.
Tell us the hoops.
He said wrought iron. Structural engineer to look at it. We're going to have to go through the OHPO. We're temporarily shoring it now. We're not going to wait for anything to occur. It's not the roof, it's the second floor from the first floor.
Okay, but I just want to make sure everyone knew that. It's there because of the University Mall grant. They rolled it down the hill and put it in the rooftop.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. Totally out of context, no sensible person in the National Register would put a house like that.
We will, I introduce these in a week.
Thank you.
Let her turn.
I'm done, thank you.
Arts Parks and Recreation?
Thank you.
Member Butler?
Thank you. I'll be brief, mostly because the Athens Municipal Arts Commission is still weighing in and considering what they would like their official stance on, and recommendations to the mayor and to council. But what I wanted to let everyone know, though, was that in February, my subcommittee made an official report, which is, oh, maybe five, six pages here. And in that report, I won't go into the details yet, out of respect for the Athens Miss Parks Commission and their formulating of an opinion, but this report briefly just has a little bit of background information, acknowledges who was a part of my subcommittee, the events that led up to this moment and juncture, why we were looking at the Hebe sculpture. Then it also includes detailed description from John Klein of Casting Arts and Technology of Cincinnati, Ohio, who came in to Athens to look at Hebe closely, and then, so it has his recommendations and his thoughts and input. And then, the last of, the very end of my report then has the formal decision and recommendations from my subcommittee that we made to the Athens Municipal Arts Commission. So, AMAC is, is weighing in on all this and considering it and looking at it, and I'm hoping that a formal decision and recommendation comes soon from them. They've been meeting twice a month, but they have special topics only once a month. So, that's where we're at at the moment. So, soon, hopefully, we'll have some official recommendations on, on Hebe. And thank you for everyone's patience here, and as you all like to say out there on TV land, so it has been a while. Thank you.
Member Butler, do you then plan on bringing their recommendation to council for an ordinance or a resolution, or is this going to stay in the administration's for a decision? Where do you intend to go with this?
Thank you for asking. I believe, and the perception I'm getting from the Athens Miss Parks Commission, is that likely a resolution will come out of it, that they would like to throw out for all of us to weigh in on, with the recommendation as well. So, some thoughts and input along with possible resolution.
So, then you'd see a resolution of just a sense of council to go to the administration?
That's my guess. That, I'm, yes, I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So, not a whole lot more to offer. I wanted to let everyone know where the process is at. I think we live in a very sensible community here, and there is a rich history of the art. I think it's a sensible community. And, and having said that, I think that members of AMAC didn't tread lightly on this particular topic, that they really are sincere and giving a lot of thought and consideration, and, and picking their, their words wisely, because this is a very sensitive issue, and it means a lot to people. So, I wanted to add a level of seriousness with that too, to acknowledge that it is something that people take serious. Thank you.
Any miscellaneous?
I, I don't have any miscellaneous. I don't know if anyone else on the committee might.
Having addressed all items on our agenda tonight, we stand adjourned.